Yes, please. Thank you. Please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rashid Field, do the roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Piper. Councilmember Marriott.
Here.
Councilmember Mormon.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Ms. Simpson.
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Piper from this evening's proceedings.
Motion to excuse Mr. Piper. The motion passed. That failed. I mean, that passes six to seven votes for Mr. Piper. And excuse absence. We were a little concerned because Mr. Piper is the one who routinely makes the motion to excuse absent councilmembers. And if he wasn't here to excuse himself, he might not have had an excuse. But fortunately, Ms. Simpson stepped up. We have minutes of May 15, 2023. Any changes or corrections? Seeing no request, it will stand approved, passed, submitted. Tonight, we have several recommendations and communications, and we get to start off with one that's very important to me personally and to members of the Arvada Urban renewal board who are present here tonight. The Urban Renewal Board is a board that is technically the mayor's selection as to who serves on that board. We've now expanded that to certainly get input from the city council in terms of criteria and who we select to sit on the Urban Renewal Board. Those of you who heard or saw my presentation of the state of the city this year look and which I discussed many, many accomplishments Urban Renewal has had since its conception here in Arvada, it has played a major role in the way Arvada looks today, taking lighted areas, providing an opportunity for refreshment of those areas and to make them a really viable part of our community. An individual who's played a major role in the success of Urban Renewal for the past 10 years is Alan Parker. Parker, if you can come down and talk to me. Alan Parker's involvement with Arvada goes much longer in term than simply the Urban Renewal Board. Alan was a very respected banker in this community for many, many years, active in the Chamber of Commerce, served on the retention committee with IEDA for many years. He exemplifies the volunteer spirit that exists in our community. Alan is the type of guy who has a lot of expertise, has a banking background, and his time on the Urban Renewal Board for the last 10 years has been invaluable to that board in being able to make good decisions looking at projects, not just rubber stamping them, but certainly looking to other issues that need to be dealt with further. And Alan's been so very important in making the right decisions at Urban Renewal in the past years. In fact, the last two years, three years, he's been chairman of the Urban Renewal Board.
Two years, I think.
Two years, and did just a great job of, you can be in line, which has been counted as a huge, huge task. So with that, I'd like to come down and present Alan Parker in appreciation for your ten years of service to the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority, a thank you from the Arvada City Council and members of the Arvada Urban Renewal Authority dated the fifth day of June 2023 for his service from March of 2013 to April of 2023. Congratulations.
Hey, I really appreciate it.
You bet. Make few words, a few words.
A few words, okay. Very, very few. Always, I'm very flattered by this. I didn't anticipate it. I will say, this is an honor certainly tonight. It's been a privilege to serve with the group that I've served with for 10 years, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. They're great people. Nobody on that board has ever had an agenda. They just do what's right for this great city that we live in. I'm very thrilled that we have them. So with that, it was my pleasure to serve you. I should be thanking you instead of you thanking me. It's been a great board, but thank you very much.
Our next proclamation will be presented by John Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. So we're going to designate July 2023 as National Parks and Recreation Month. I'd like to have Anessa James, Director of Vibrant Community and Neighborhoods, and Jeff Glenn, the Executive Director of Apex Parks and Rec, come on down to the podium, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the state of Colorado and the city of Arvada, and Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and is an essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and national, natural recreation areas ensure that the ecological beauty of our community provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and city council of Arvada, Colorado, that the city recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources and proclaims that the month of July 2023 be designated as Parks and Recreation Month. It's dated and signed this fifth day of June 2023 by Mayor Williams and all members of council, and I'll bring it down.
All right, I'll go first. I do have some prepared remarks for tonight, so thank you so much, Mayor and members of council, for proclaiming July as National Park and Recreation Month in Arvada. I'm truly honored to accept this proclamation alongside my partner, Jeff Glenn, from the Apex Park and Recreation District. So since 1985, Americans across the United States have celebrated Park and Recreation Month each July to build strong, vibrant, and resilient communities through the power of Parks and Recreation. National Park and Recreation Month is also a time to recognize the more than 160,000 full-time park and recreation professionals, along with hundreds of thousands of part-time seasonal workers and volunteers that maintain our nation's local, state, and community parks. The services that Parks and Recreation professionals provide are vital to our communities, from protecting open spaces and natural resources, to helping fight obesity and providing activities and resources for all people. I'm incredibly grateful to work with a team of dedicated and skilled Parks and Rec professionals at the city of Arvada and at Apex Park and Recreation District, and I believe deeply in the power of parks and open space to feed the human soul. So thank you again for celebrating Parks and Recreation in our community for the month of July, and I'll turn it over to Jeff Glenn.
Thank you, Anessa. On behalf of staff and my board of directors, who some of them are here tonight, I'd like to thank council for having us here tonight. We're excited to celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month. The theme this year is where communities grow, and we can't think of a better partnership or a better example of how communities grow than our partnership with the city of Arvada and their Parks Department and all of you at city council. Apex's mission, as you know, is to enhance the community's health, that's socially, emotionally, and physically. We serve multiple generations. We provide places where people can grow their community, and without you all, we could not accomplish that. So we're very grateful to have this partnership. We're very excited to celebrate Parks and Recreation Month in July. We have a bingo card game that'll be out in the community. We've got several events, and we just look forward to sharing this with our partners here at the city. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mayor. It is my honor this evening to present the proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I ask Kiara Ruiz to come to the podium, please. Ki is not only a constituent of mine in District One, but is also a leader with Guns to Gardens, Be Smart, the Brady United, and Moms Demand Action. Well, while Arvada has certainly not been exempt from gun violence, of course, we have suffered some, some recent deaths in our police force with both Officer Dylan Vaykov last year and Gordon Beasley two years ago, and of course Johnny Hurley at that same time in the tragic events of Old Town. And so it is very important, I believe, for our community to take the time to think about gun violence and how it affects all of us. So therefore, whereas every day more than 110 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are nearly 16,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her 26th birthday. So to help honor Hadia and the more than 110 Americans whose lives are cut short every day and the survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 2nd, 2023, the first Friday in June, as the 10th National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2nd, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, such as those from the December 2007 Youth with a Mission shooting in Arvada. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that the first Friday in June, June 2nd, 2023, be designated National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and we encourage all to support local efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives, dated this fifth day of June 2023.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to make this very brief this year. Last year, I accepted this proclamation on behalf of my children here. My son is a gun violence survivor, just like myself, with his return to school. In 2022, the CDC recognized that young people under the age of 18 firearms as the number-one leader to their death. It's the number-one cause of mortality. That is something that's happening nationwide. But what's happening in Arvada right now is I just see a need for catharsis, a reconciliation. I wear the shirts from the various organizations that I work with to coffee shops and when I go about my day, and it's always very surprising to me that if I'm in line for coffee, somebody will turn around and gasp and tell me where they were that day that Johnny Hurley was killed and Officer Beasley were killed. And this is happening more and more here, and so I'm just looking forward to seeing how the city council and city government will support like gun violence prevention efforts here, because the city here does need a catharsis. I have, associated with a number of groups, I've offered to bring in Guns to Gardens if we want to like hit on some hot pieces of metal and turn them into gardening tools, if we want to do any Be Smart education, anything, because this is something that is a major scope going on right now in our country, and there is no easy fix to this. We were at the proclamation on Friday at the governor's mansion for the same thing, for National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and it's just a lot of people looking in the room like, we don't have the answers, we don't have the easy fixes. There are no easy fixes, but I do know that the community right now is hurting, and that's something that I see every time I wear some of this stuff, and I'm just out and about. So thank you very much, and I accept this proclamation on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Mr. Mormon, if you have a second proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, June is Pride Month, and so the proclamation is for Pride, and I have a very personal connection to this recognition, being a member of the LGBTQI community. And I, I hope that we take this month as a community to embrace kindness and celebrate the worth of all people in our community, including those that are marginalized and stigmatized, and especially our LGBTQIA youth. And I want to have a call out to Apex. I had the great opportunity a month ago to go to your Pride Prom, and it was such an awesome event where everyone was welcome and it provided a safe space for our kids. So I'm glad you are here in the room and wanted to give you that shout out. And I encourage us as a city council to consider next year that we help support the Pride Prom event at Apex, like we do our other prom events throughout the community. Without further ado, I will read the proclamation. Whereas the Arvada City Council recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2023 as Pride Month throughout the city of Arvada. And whereas the city of Arvada values and promotes diversity, inclusivity, and equality for all its residents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas Pride Month is an internationally recognized celebration that honors the LGBTQ plus community, their rich history, and their ongoing efforts for equality and acceptance. And whereas Pride Month provides an opportunity for individuals, organizations, and communities to come together in support of LGBTQ plus rights and to raise awareness about the challenges faced by this community. And whereas the city of Arvada acknowledges and appreciates the contributions and positive impact of the LGBTQ plus community on our city's cultural, social, and economic fabric. And whereas Pride Month serves as a reminder of the ongoing work needed to achieve full equality and to create a society where all individuals can live free from discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the city of Arvada remains committed to furthering diversity, equity, and inclusion through our national, through our internal DEI committee and the current engagement with a DI consultant to approve our services. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of city council do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Pride Month in the city of Arvada, Colorado, in support of the LGBTQ plus community. The city and will illuminate the Old Town Arvada Water Tower on June 23rd to raise awareness of the celebration, dated this fifth day of June 2023.
Our next call upon Lauren Simpson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to call up Deputy City Manager Lynda Haley, and on behalf of the DEI committee here in the city. Speaking of important DEI efforts, this is a bit of history that was always taught in Texas history books, and I am very, very happy it is being taught nationwide and recognized nationwide. Now, I am pleased to present the proclamation for Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth is a significant and historic commemoration in American history, honoring the emancipation of enslaved African Americans, and whereas Juneteenth marks the date of June 19, 1985, when Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, with news in accordance of the Emancipation Proclamation, which had been issued more than two years prior, that the Civil War had ended and that the enslaved were free. And whereas Juneteenth represents a momentous milestone in the journey towards equality and justice, symbolizing the end of one of the darkest periods in our nation's history and the triumph of freedom and resilience. Whereas the city of Arvada Council acknowledges the historical significance of Juneteenth Independence Day to the United States. And whereas residents of Arvada are encouraged to join the continued nationwide celebration of Juneteenth Independence Day, to provide an opportunity for the people of the United States to learn more about the past and to better understand the experiences that have shaped the United States. Whereas the city of Arvada recognizes that the observance of the end of slavery is part of the history and heritage of our country. And whereas the city will illuminate the Old Town Water Tower to raise awareness of the celebration. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and members of this city council of Arvada, Colorado, that June 19, 2023, will be recognized as Juneteenth Independence Day, and encourage all residents to join in the celebration and solidarity, and urges all residents to actively raise their own awareness of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and our city. Dated this fifth day of June 2023, signed by the mayor and all members of council.
Thank you very much. I'm honored to accept not only this proclamation, but also the proclamation on, on Pride Month. Thank you. Truly an honor for me to accept this, and thank you so much. Both of these are important reminders to all of us of not only the awareness that we must have to further our efforts, but the role and the important role that we play as a local government in furthering these efforts as well. So on behalf of the city of Arvada, thank you so much for your support, city council.
Ah, I'll start over. The intent of public comment is an opportunity for citizens to come forward and give us their input on issues that are important to them. Public comment is not a time for us to get into a debate or to give you immediate answers. It's an opportunity for you to tell us what's on your mind. If you've got questions, the reason we have you fill out these speaker forms is so that we know who to contact, so that our city staff can look into the issues that you bring up and give you some response. So with that, I'll call Brett Forbes to the stand first, to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Brett Forbes. I live at 8240 Chase Way, and I'm here this evening concerning the Wolf Husky breeds at 8199 Benton Way. How many of you have shut off your alarm clocks right away? Now consider if you weren't able to shut off that alarm, and it went on and on and on, like at 6:10 in the morning, 6:14, 6:40, and another day, 6:28, 6:31, 6:59, 7:04, 7:15, or on another day, 3:08 in the morning, 3:14, 3:70, or 3:17, or 4:22 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, and the list goes on and on and on. How many entertain? My wife is into touch rugby, and when the team used to come over, we'd get comments like, OMG, you have to put up with that. How many of you are aware that Arvada has a statute against roosters? Can anyone guess why? Now, it seems that your predecessors had the fortitude to push forward, push something forward. I wonder, as this has been a known issue for quite some time, how long will this display continue? This display of irresponsibility, is there any integrity here? I know my neighbor has come before the council previously. It seems that irresponsibility reigns, not only on part of the council, but for the owners as well. There is little to no interaction with these animals. They're outside 24/7, 365, rain, sleet, snow, constantly trying to get out. They've been in my yard, the neighbor's yard. I have a little girl that just turned eight months old. It looks like Stalag 13 from the back of my house. I believe history has taught us that we just don't know what lies ahead. But I tell you what, I'd certainly be ashamed to be associated with such a tragic event. If y'all are going to sit idly by, I can promise you one thing, you really don't belong here, because all y'all are doing is nothing more than giving your fellow citizens the finger, and I will be picketing for your removal. I can promise you that. Please give our officers who don't have the time to deal with nuisance issues as this for something that doesn't belong in an urban setting.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, sir. Next, Colleen Miller.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. Mayor Williams, first, thank you for your time as our mayor, and congratulations on your retirement. Also, Mayor Williams, thank you for pushing back on Governor Polis' overreach of proposed Senate bill, which would have significantly changed zoning in our community. Now it appears pushback is required with Jefferson County. What Jeffco approves in unincorporated Jeffco significantly affects West Arvada. Many residents of Arvada are not aware of what areas are in Arvada and which ones are in incorporated Jeffco. Also unknown to many of us is the city, state, or county road maintenance repairs. Arvada is often accused of increased development, bad road, and increased traffic when sometimes it's not from actions or decisions made by the city of Arvada. This all results in unnecessary bad press for Arvada. Within the last two years or so, Jeffco has approved a significant number of multiple residential, both rental and owner-occupied developments along McIntyre between 50th and 54th Avenue. All of these new builds in unincorporated Jeffco will directly affect West Arvada in multiple ways. Now for the big one, that the reason the city of Arvada council and staff should have a heart-to-heart discussion with Jeffco and pushback on the county, just as the state of Colorado required and received their necessary pushback. That is the proposed warehousing and distribution facility near 60th and McIntyre. This three-building project, consisting of approximately a half-million square feet of warehouse space with proposed parking for over 700 vehicles, with over 900 truck trips per day, not to mention more trips by employees, vendors, maintenance workers, trash haulers, and others, is surrounded on three sides by residential communities along McIntyre, with the, all the approved residential development there makes this truly beyond incompatible. True, this land is zoned light industrial and has been so for 50 or more years. How can this be considered light industrial is just another matter. In the years since the initial zoning, homes were built all around this site. The community grew around it and is considered part of Arvada. A developer with grand ideas came along. It appears the county saw dollar signs, and here we are. New builds of any sort should be compatible with the existing surroundings. This project is not compatible. Jefferson County seems to be in for this project regardless of all in community input and Jeffco's own scheduled update for their own land use code. All of this will reflect badly on Arvada, and it will impact Arvada badly. My background is that as a regional distribution center manager. I am all too aware of this kind of operation and what it entails. These operations do have their place. This is not the place for this project, just as Indiana- This is not the place for this project, just as Indiana was not the place for Amazon. Given all that, I respectfully request that the City of Arvada have a frank discussion with Jefferson County about what Jeffco is doing to West Arvada, to the community, including roads, traffic, infrastructure, and much more, including the general quality of life of those living in Arvada.
Okay, your time is up. I've given you some-
Have this discussion with Jeffco quickly. What the state tried to do with Arvada is not good, what Jefferson County is trying to do with Arvada is also not good. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Sally Eberhard.
Good evening. My name is Sally Eberhard. I'm an Arvada resident, and I'm here as a volunteer representative of an organization we want to introduce you to called Citizens Climate Lobby. I'm also here to thank you, but let me explain what CCL or Citizens Climate Lobby is. It's a nonprofit, nonpartisan advocacy group that works on a national and international basis to promote strategies and programs to mitigate the negative effects of climate change. Up until the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Bill, our focus was mainly on national issues. We're expanding that focus now to devote ourselves more to regional and local issues. So in my own experience, one of the things about volunteering for CCL that I've appreciated is that they're a positive, forward-moving organization that's also very practical. So we are trying to establish more relationship with our local governments, like we have with Jeffco Sustainability Commission, with the Golden Sustainability Commission, and now Arvada as our being residents here, and support what you are already doing. We thank you for hiring a new sustainability coordinator, who I just was in touch with today, and we look forward to working with your Sustainability Advisory Committee, or not working with them, but seeing what they come up with and we can maybe support them. We have resources to offer, which I'll explain to them when we get a chance to meet with them. But first of all, we thought it was a good idea just to introduce our organization, Citizens Climate Lobby. If you hear about it in the future, you maybe will remember this introduction. So thank you for your work in climate change.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Do we have anybody on Zoom? I'll close the public comment portion. We have another one for, you can speak up to five minutes at the end of the meeting if you wish to. Next, we'll move on to new business. We've got five items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution approving an agreement between Arvada and Jason and Christine Gillis for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to accommodate retaining walls for a driveway to serve the property at forty-four-oh-three West Sixty-Eighth Avenue within a public right-of-way. The second is a resolution approving an agreement between Arvada, D and T Properties, and Stone Cellar Bistro for the grant of a revocable encroachment license to install an outdoor patio area in the Grandview Avenue right-of-way. Third is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the subdividers agreement concerning Arvada House and approving a partial subordination of that subdividers agreement for the benefit of the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority, which we know as CHAF. Next is a resolution authorizing a lease agreement and repair and maintenance agreement by and between Arvada and Mickey Romero for the property located at one-two-six-oh-five West Seventy-Segventh Avenue, also known as Moore Farm. Last resolution on the consent agenda is a resolution amending and restating planned documents and authorizing an adoption agreement for the executive defined contribution retirement plan. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that consent agenda items resolutions are twenty-three-dash-zero-four-seven through R twenty-three-dash-zero-five-one all be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. As an aside, if you haven't been to the Stone Cellar Bistro yet, it's been a great addition to Old Town Arvada. I'd suggest you try to get by if you can. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. We have a resolution authorizing an agreement regarding funding of major drainageway planning for Hidden Lake Drainageway and Bates Lake Drainageway. And Melanie Walker will be making this presentation.
Good evening. It's Melanie Walter.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Flood plate, Melanie Walter, flood plate administrator. Council action is requested on the attached resolution authorizing the agreement between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as Mile High Flood District, and Adams County, the City of Westminster, and the City of Arvada regarding funding of the major drainageway planning study for Hidden Lake Drainageway and Bates Lake Drainageway. Approval of this resolution will enable Mile High Flood District to secure an engineer to render technical advice and recommend design solutions to drainage problems in the Hidden Lake and Bates Lake watersheds. These watersheds overlap three municipalities, including Arvada, Westminster, and Adams County. The Arvada team recommends that the city council approved R twenty-three-dash-zero-five-two, a resolution authorizing the agreement by and between the City of Arvada and the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as Mile High Flood District, Adams County, the City of Westminster, and the City of Arvada for funding of the major drainageway planning study for Hidden Lake Drainageway and Bates Lake Drainageway.
Very good. Melanie does a good job of making sure I don't mess up too bad down at the Flood Control District meetings. Very good. Lisa Smith.
I'll make the motion, if that's okay.
You may proceed.
I move that R twenty-three-dash-zero-five-two, a resolution authorizing the agreement by and between the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, DBA, Mile High Flood District, Adams County, and the City of Arvada and the City of Westminster regarding funding of major drainageway planning for Hidden Lake Drainageway and Bates Lake Drainageway be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we have R twenty-three-oh-five-three, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to intergovernmental agreement for prisoner transport services. And Aaron Jacks, Senior Assistant City Attorney, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Marriott and members of council. Since two thousand and seven, the Arvada Police Department has participated in an intergovernmental agreement with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office in order for JCSO to transport prisoners between jail facilities in the state of Colorado on persons who are subject to charges originating with the Arvada Police Department. This amendment updates the Transport IGA, as it's called, to reflect inflation that's occurred since two thousand and seven and to provide a flat annual fee structure rather than a per-transport fee structure. This amendment, as an amendment, as a modification to an existing IGA, is appropriate for council adoption by resolution. The Arvada team is recommending that the city council approve R twenty-three-oh-five-three, resolution authorizing a First Amendment to an intergovernmental agreement for prisoner transport services.
Open it up for City Council questions or action. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that R twenty-three-dash-zero-five-three, a resolution authorizing a First Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement for prisoner transport services be approved.
Motion for approval? All votes are cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Our final resolution for this evening is R twenty-three-oh-five-four, a resolution directing city staff not to collect system development charges under the fee schedule set forth in ordinance number forty-eight-nineteen, and instead continue collecting system development charges under the current fee schedule until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. And Sharon Israel, our Director of Utilities, will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Water and sewer system development charges provide a critical source of funding for projects that add infrastructure capacity to support planned development. In October twenty-twenty-two, the city council approved adjustments to system development charges with an effective date of July first, twenty twenty-three. This resolution will direct the city team to delay collection of the new system development charges until October first, twenty twenty-three. Over the past three years, the city team has provided information and updates to the council regarding this, including annual budgets and workshops related to water, sewer, and stormwater master planning efforts. This work supports the city council strategic plan that calls for the updated master plans for water, sewer, and stormwater, as well as implementation plan and budget recommendations. Based on the master planning and financial strategy recommended by the city team, the city council approved those ordinances last October with effective dates in twenty twenty-three. Prior to this action, the water system development charge had not been adjusted since twenty seventeen, and the sewer system development charge had not been adjusted since twenty eleven. Adjusting these charges will increase revenue to support the additional water and sewer capacity required to serve planned development. This also aligns with the philosophy that growth pays for itself, and the cost of adding capacity is not to be borne by existing customers through rates and service fees. Over the past several months, the city team has been consulting with experts regarding the system development charges adopted in October of last year. Some additional quality checks and modifications to the basis of the calculations for these charges are needed at this time. Based on this work, we recommend delaying the implementation date of adjusted charges by three months. The city team does not anticipate that the additional verification work will increase the cost of the SDCs or system development charges above what was originally adopted for July first. So the Arvada team recommends that the city council approve R twenty-three-dash-oh-five-four, a resolution directing city staff not to collect system development charges under the fee schedule set forth in ordinance number four-eight-one-nine, and instead continue collecting system development charges under the current fee schedule until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Very good. Ms. Simpson, you're first, and then Lisa's. Okay?
I'll take the motion.
Ms. Simpson? You may proceed.
I move that R twenty-three-dash-zero-five-four, a resolution directing city staff not to collect system development charges until the fee schedule set forth in ordinance number four-eight-one-nine, and instead continue collecting system development charges under the current fee schedule until September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three be approved.
Motion for approval? That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I'll let you proceed with first reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have five ordinances on the agenda tonight for first reading. First, Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero, I move that Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-one-four an ordinance repealing and reacting section sixty-two-dash-thirty-nine criminal mischief and adding sections sixty-two-dash-seventy-nine criminal tampering services, sixty-two-dash-eighty criminal tampering property, sixty-two-dash-eighty-one criminal liability of business entities, and sixty-two-dash-eighty-two criminal liability of an individual for corporate conduct of Article Two miscellaneous offenses of Chapter sixty-two offenses to the Arvada City Code. And Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-one-five, an ordinance amending various sections of the Arvada City Code to reflect change in the, to reflect the change in the name from North Jeffco Parks and Recreation to Apex Park and Recreation District. And number three, Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-one-six, an ordinance amending subsection I-one-V-I-I sentencing authority, sentencing options of section fifty-eight-dash-one, jurisdiction and powers of municipal court of Article One in general of Chapter fifty-eight Municipal Court of the Arvada City Code. Next, Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-one-seven, an ordinance repealing and reenacting section two-dash-two-one-one leasing of city-owned property of Article Six, city property of Chapter Two Administration of the Arvada City Code. And finally, Council Bill twenty-three-dash-zero-one-eight, an ordinance amending certain provisions within the Land Development Code of the Arvada City Code to add the zoning district, commercial, neighborhood, all be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearing date set for July tenth, twenty twenty-three at six fifteen PM.
Motion for approval on first reading? All votes are cast.
Yes, I'll start out here and then I'll turn it over to Patty McCartney, our senior planner on these projects. But I'll just say, these plans took a little bit of time to come together. The pandemic kind of threw us for a loop on this, but we were able to get these plans in front of Planning Commission and now before council with a lot of public input and public support, both from residents, business owners, and property owners, and the great city team that put these together. So I will turn it over to Patty to make a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council persons. The presentation, please. Thank you. No, that's no problem. The City of Arvada adopted the comprehensive plan in two thousand and fourteen and articulates our shared vision and vision of the community through policy and goals developed in the city to accomplish the vision. The Newtown Subarea Plan will further implement those. The goals that it specifically supports is encouraging development in transit areas, redevelop and revitalize existing commercial and industrial areas, strengthen linkage between land use and transportation, and develop safe and comprehensive multipurpose bicycle trail and pedestrian systems and others. This project was initiated in twenty twenty, to create a long-term vision for future development and redevelopment in the Newtown area of the city. The city plans applicable to this project included Arvada Transit Station Framework Plan, Old Town Station Urban Renewal Plan, Park System Master Plan, and a vision for Newtown Urban Land Institute Report and others. Community engagement included three technical advisory committee and steering committee meetings, four community open houses, one was held virtually, and the other three were in person, two speak-up online community surveys. The Newtown Subarea is generally defined in the commercial corridor along Wadsworth Boulevard and bypass between the G-line tracks on the north and Interstate seventy to the south. The Arvada Marketplace Center along Fifty-second Avenue and commercial area to the east is also included in the Subarea Plan. The plan recommendations are categorized by focus elements of the Subarea Plan, and those included recommendations for preferred land use, parking and viewshed corridor, design elements such as architectural and design, and identifying general small urban park locations and streetscape design, pedestrian and trail connectivity, and also infrastructure and sustainability to be evaluated at any time of new development or redevelopment in the area. Recommendation of the plan is intended to be specific yet flexible so that the vision for each focus element may be achieved. The implementation strategy, the last chapter of the plan, identifies the action items to implement the plan recommendations, the relevant focus elements for the plan. It identifies key stakeholders that can be helped, that can help with each item and be potential champions or partners. And the last column provides anticipated timeline for each action item. Those timelines are intended to be flexible but does not prevent the action items from being implemented earlier or later as identified in the matrix. On May second, twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero in approval of the resolution being presented to you tonight to amend the comprehensive plan to incorporate the Newtown Subarea Plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I do have a question in regards to sustainability. So the recommendation is that it should be evaluated at the time of development or redevelopment. What are the criteria that we will be using for that evaluation?
There is no criteria specifically set out in the Subarea Plan. However, we have, I believe, referenced a sustainability plan that has been, it's a little, it's been prepared quite some time ago, but that's been referenced, and it's also mentioned as a recommendation so that we identify as we move forward if there are any policies that have been implemented by the city, those be considered in development or redevelopment.
So, yes, I'm familiar with the Sustainability Committee looking at updating the sustain Arvada plan. And so- And so, if I'm hearing you correctly, part of that consideration should be looking at specifically these plans and what type of criteria should be used when you get new development or redevelopment. Is that accurate to say?
Yes, we will. And there were no specific criteria identified going through this process for the plan itself. However, we identify, as you mentioned, that there is some ongoing efforts with the committees, and that's why we wanted to bring it forward as a recommendation of the plan, to make sure that we consider those when we move forward with any kind of development or new development that have been established.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, I'd look for a motion. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that CP 2023-0001, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the Newtown Subarea Plan, be ratified and approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, we're also going to consider our CP 2023-0002, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan. And are you doing that presentation as well?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
Thank you. Rob, did you have anything to add? Okay. Thank you. The city is requesting to ratify the Planning Commission's approval of amendment to the 2014 Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan. If adopted, it will be considered an element of the Comprehensive Plan. The Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan will further implement the Comprehensive Plan goals and policies specifically supports goals to plan for well-located, high-quality commercial developments, redevelop and revitalize existing commercial and industrial areas, establish and maintain Arvada's distinct qualities and small-time... small-town identities specific to city gateways, develop safe and comprehensive multipurpose trail, pedestrian and bicycle systems, and others. The Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan, as with the other one, was initiated in 2020, and it's... was designed to create a long-term vision to guide future development and redevelopment that encourages and supports sustainable community development in the northwest area of the city. The plans applicable... the city plans applicable to this project include Park System Master Plan, Bicycle Master Plan, the Candela's Retail Study, and others. Community engagement, similar to the Newtown Subarea Plan, included three technical advisory committee and steering committee meetings, four community open houses, and two speak-up online community surveys. The Northwest Arvada Subarea is generally located along Highway 72 in the area east of Highway 93 to Indiana Street, and along Indiana Street between the railroad line on the south and the city boundary on the north. The area is located both within the city and unincorporated Jefferson County. The Subarea Plan is comprised of two phases. Phase one is the primary study area located along the Indiana Street corridor, and phase two is located along Highway 72. The phase-one area is the primary focus of developing the plan, as this will include land use and other elements more specific than phase-two area. The phase-two remaining detailed elements, such as design connectivity and transportation, will be determined later. The focus elements of the plan were developed with the public through the plan development process for the Subarea and include land use, connectivity, design, infrastructure, and sustainability. Recommendations of the plan are categorized as focus elements within either the phase-one or phase-two areas of the Subarea Plan. These include preferred future land use recommendations for phase-one and phase-two areas, connectivity in both phase-one and phase-two areas, design elements such as potential commercial and community place and streetscape and gateway entrances in the phase-one area, and infrastructure and sustainability, all to be evaluated new development or redevelopment. The Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan, the implementation strategy is similar to the draft... similar to the Newtown Subarea Plan, with the exception of an additional column identifying the phase area relevant to the action item created from the implement... from the plan recommendations. On May 2nd, 2023, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero in approval of the resolution at a public hearing to amend the 2014 Comprehensive Plan and incorporate the Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan. Are there any questions?
Mr. Jones?
I'll just wait to reserve the motion.
Okay. I see no other questions. You may proceed.
Thank you. I move that CP 2023-0002, a resolution by the Planning Commission for the City of Arvada, Colorado, to be... to amend the 2014 Arvada Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan, be ratified and approved. This motion is based on the findings of fact and the required conditions, if any, adopted by the Planning Commission.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you for your work, and everybody in that department, their work on this. This has been a long process. We've had some very good presentations to city council, and I think these two plans are going to help carry us into the future very well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have appointment to the Old Town Business Improvement District Board. Peter, I assume that's why you're sticking around.
It's not. I wasn't written. Thank you.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to appoint Scott Spears, Deborah Hanson, Dwayne Cameron, and Michael Griffith for three-year terms ending April 30th, 2026, to the Old Town Business District Improvement Board. And, yeah, I'll do them separate.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence.
Okay. I also move to appoint Stephen Cohen to an unexpired one-year term ending April 30th,
All votes are cast. That, again, passes unanimously, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Just another board that this city has of members of our community who give so much back to the community. So, we know these individuals will do a great job for us on the bid. Next, we have a consideration of a motion to call up an administratively-approved application regarding In-N-Out Burger. And Mr. Mormon?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be making the motion and providing a comment. First of all, the motion. I move that DA 2022-0072 and DA 2022-0074, In-N-Out Burger Site Plan and Minor Subdivision, be scheduled for a public hearing at city council in accordance with Section 823-11J of the Land Development Code. This is, I believe, the first time exercising our call-up that we... policy we passed recently to our Land Development Code. And this was to provide some balance between decisions made administratively and those made quasi-judicially by this body, and of course, having a public hearing process with the Planning Commission as well. And when this project in particular was seen before by the Planning Commission and by city council, we were looking specifically at major modifications, and we had some strict criteria that we had to evaluate in that hearing. And there were other concerns that I shared with members of the public in regards to traffic and air quality that we were not able to address at that hearing because it was not part of the major modification criteria that we were examining. And so, I am exercising this right tonight to request that we consider a call-up so that we can have a public hearing about traffic and air quality. This intersection is at I-70 in Wadsworth. It is one of the busiest intersections in the Denver metro area, and therefore, I think it's important that we take the time to look at what those impacts could be in regards to traffic and air quality. And of course, we've had a lot of discussion recently with our legislative counterparts of the state legislature about land use policy and efforts there to take away local control when it comes to land use. And so I think this is an important step for us to take, to take that responsibility, and to look at an impact that could be argued to have a regional and statewide significance because it is one of the busiest intersections. And air quality-wise, we have just been downgraded for ozone, and so I think it's important for us to examine the data and look at what impacts this project could have.
Thank you for that. No one else has indicated a desire to speak? People would... Ms. Simpson, I'm sorry. Did you wish to speak?
Yes, I... Well, I was going to reserve it for after the motion, actually. Thank you.
I think he's made the motion.
He did make the motion. I'm sorry. So, there was a great deal of talk. I'm actually going to be supporting the call-up. I recall when we had the major modification hearings, we had community members in attendance that evening, and they wished to talk about the impacts to the local neighborhood, specifically column by neighborhood, which is the surrounding neighborhood there in southeast Arvada. And we informed them that that evening's hearing was for major modifications of that specific site plan. And even under the criteria for the larger application, it is impacted to the neighborhood. And I personally assured them that that would not be the end of it, and that they would have opportunity to continue with that topic. And so, for that very reason, I will be supporting the call-up to look at this under additional criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Mormon, if you'll vote. And I'm going to explain why I'm going to oppose the motion. My philosophy on this is that this is something where we did have a very detailed public hearing. We took lengthy public testimony on a number of issues. Traffic was certainly an issue at that time as well. And frankly, I'm looking at this that our professional staff is in a much better position to be able to do the analysis of the site plan and to handle the administrative issues on this without having to bring it back to council. I'm also concerned about delays for the developer. This project has been in the works for a long, long time, and I think it's time to put a bow on it and go ahead and proceed with the project... with the full city council meeting. I think it was a six-to-one vote, as I recall, in approval at that phase of it. And now, the hard work by our city team in terms of the administrative work on it causes me to vote against the motion. That ends up in a tie with Mr.... with Mr. Mormon, Lauren Simpson, and Lisa Smith, all voting yes for the call-up, and with myself, David Jones, and Mr. Marriott voting no. Since it results in a tie, the motion fails. Thank you. Next, we'll move into public hearing. Call to order for public hearing, Council Bill 23-011, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 62-43 Fireworks of Article II Miscellaneous Offenses of Chapter 62 Offenses of the Arvada City Code. And Aaron Jacks is going to make the presentation on this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This repeal and reenactment of Section 6243 would revise the city code to provide liability for social hosts who permit fireworks to be used on property that they own, whether it's private... or, excuse me, on private... on properties that they own, or if they are to officiate, organize, supervise, or otherwise have a gathering on public or private property where fireworks are used. The Arvada Police Department, as you might imagine, every year addresses a number of fireworks violations in the city, particularly around the July 4th holiday. Both Commander Melanie Thornton, who authored a memorandum to the chief about this issue, is present, as well as Deputy Chief Todd Reeves to speak about this issue if council would like. The intent of the ordinance for council is to give Arvada PD officers greater flexibility to identify and issue a citation in situations which frankly happen quite often, where officers respond to a call of a fireworks complaint. And by the time they're able to arrive on what council understands is a very busy time of the year, they often find evidence of fireworks usage, but they're unable to establish what person used or possessed those fireworks. This would provide the APD an additional tool to enforce our fireworks ordinance as appropriate. Would note that this does not remove any discretion from our officers to determine how to investigate a case or what action they will necessarily take. Again, it is just to expand their ability to take enforcement action if they deem appropriate. Happy to take any questions. Again, Chief Reeves and Commander Thornton are also here if they might be of service.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? And I assume we have no one signed up on Zoom. I'll close the public comment portion, open up city council questions or actions. It's going to be Ms. Simpson, then Ms. Smith, and Mr. Mormon.
I'd like to reserve the motion as well as ask a question.
Go ahead.
All right. So, in terms of enforcement of this, obviously, this gives a lot more enforcement authority. Could you tell us what the penalties could potentially be for residents on first as well as multiple offenses?
Councilmember Simpson, there are no sentencing provisions written into this ordinance specifically. So, any violation would be subject to potential penalties, as with any other Arvada City ordinance, a fine of up to $2,650 and/or 180 days in jail. Speaking from personal experience, in my previous experience with the Arvada Police Department, I have never seen such a severe penalty in a fireworks case. However, this is a city ordinance, as with any other, and subject to the same penalties.
Perfect. And do we know of other neighboring communities who suffer from the fireworks issues as we do? Do we know if they have similar ordinances?
When I researched this for drafting, located language in the North Glenn Municipal Code, similar, but phrased differently than ours, and also in the city of Greeley, which was very similar to ours as well. Locally, those were the two that I found. This is not something that's done, frankly, on a widespread basis that I could find in Colorado. I found several precedent ordinances in the state of California, whereas, you might imagine, this is a top-of-mind issue with wildfire that they have had in that state and so forth. But we... there are... this is not unprecedented. We do have other communities in the state.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I'm just wondering if you know of the first offenses that people... that the police department goes and responds to of the people that are committing that first offense? Do they... how often are they getting cited versus just given a warning?
Ms. Smith, I would defer perhaps to Commander Thornton to be able to speak to that. She, as the Charlie Sector Commander, I believe, has had responsibilities for operations around the Stinger Firework Show, and I know that's where these complaints are centered on the holiday.
Councilmember Smith, I would answer that by saying that it's almost always a warning. That's if the officers can get there when someone is still using the fireworks or meet the criteria for the ordinance. And the... over the holiday last year, there was only one citation written the whole year.
So, if we change the ordinance to this, this would allow that, instead of them getting a warning, they could get issued that citation because we would have enough flexibility to enforce that?
I would agree with that, except that this ordinance... this change would allow the officers to enforce after the fact so that they could address the major parties, the more unsafe parties, big displays, that right now, we can't get to while they're still occurring or can't identify a person safely in order to enforce it. So, this would be enforceable after the fact. Say if there was video evidence, we could go back and...
Perfect.
...cite those people.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mormon?
Thank you. I guess my question's back to you, Mr. Jacks. When you said that there would be discretion in the enforcement of this, I guess one of my concerns would be a property owner who's not home, and someone else is on the property, unbeknownst to the property owner, setting off fireworks. I mean, that could very well happen. And how would... how would we respond to that? Sort of, how would we deal with that situation?
Mr. Mormon, I would say that in that circumstance, again, we rely on our officers to make good decisions based on the totality of the circumstances. Further, the ordinance still requires that a social host permit this behavior to occur. I think you would have a hard time making the stretch that somebody who was not home and just had some neighborhood kids come over, and I'm just giving an example, come over to their driveway to light off fireworks, that an officer would find that that is a reasonable situation. reasonable situation in which to issue a citation. Certainly, the strict liability provision that we've included here is intentional, to give the officers the maximum discretion to do so when they believe it's appropriate. But as always, and again, I can't stress enough, we rely on our officers to make good decisions in the field. This is just a way for them to do, to overcome the opposite, I think, of the situation you're describing, that frankly, officers run into much more frequently when there's a group of people. Everybody claims ignorance, and you've got the owner of the property there who is clearly hosting this property, or, excuse me, this party, and yet, no one will take responsibility. The officers will be able to charge in that situation, which I think will give the outcome that the city's hoping for.
Yes. Thank you for that. And then, I guess my second question is, I noticed in the Arvada report, so it was very well done, it was very clear about the law around fireworks now, and that sparklers are included. And so, I'm curious as to how often citations are given for sparklers.
I would defer to Commander Thornton on the details of what types of fireworks we may be encountering.
Again, I'm not aware of any citations for sparklers. The one last year resulted in a major injury, and that's why the officer opted for the citation. I've not seen it for sparklers ever.
Okay. Thank you.
Boy, as a kid, I used to get burned by those sparkler-used ones routinely. You grabbed the wrong end, exactly. Ms. Simpson?
All right. Thank you. I move that CB 23-011, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 62-43 fireworks of Article II miscellaneous offenses of Chapter 62 offenses of the Arvada City Code, be approved on final reading numbered 4844 and ordered published by title only. And I will quickly speak to the motion. So, I will be supporting this motion. I will say that fireworks around the Fourth of July, probably about the two weeks before and the two weeks after, are one of the top complaints I get every year, without fail, repeated. And so, just to remind our good public, I know fireworks are a lot of fun. Please look for safe places to shoot them off. I know that they're a good time, but we are in fire danger in this community. It is an arid climate, so please be respectful of your neighbors and have fun safely.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you. I'd like to speak to this motion as well. I'm gonna be voting no on this motion. And the reasons why are, you know, I totally understand the conflicts we have immediately around the Fourth of July with fireworks, people who complain about fireworks and people who entertain themselves with fireworks, and I'm not pretending to take a side in that particular debate. But I will note that it's a very small window of time within our community when we think about the totality of the year, and we've got this brief period of time where there's some of this conflict. And to me, that doesn't, that brief period of time doesn't rise to the, to the level of requiring what feels to me to be, you know, a little bit of an unbalanced ability to exercise authority here. You know, my understanding of this is, you can cite someone when you haven't been able to identify who committed the crime. I don't know, that doesn't seem like the right answer to me. You can also, under this particular ordinance, you could charge somebody for something they didn't do. Again, something I'm uncomfortable doing. So, for those reasons, I'm a no on this motion.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Yeah, this is a hard one, but, you know, I guess the way I look at it is, I see this as another tool in our officer's hand to remedy a situation. So, while I appreciate the comments of Mr. Marriott, I will be supporting this because I believe we need to give our, our police department all the tools necessary to do the jobs to protect our community. So, I appreciate this bringing, being brought forward.
Mr. Jones, you stole exactly what I was going to say. I will also be supporting the motion. That passes five to one, with Mr. Marriott being the no vote and Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 23-012, an ordinance authorized in an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Jefferson County School District related to Campbell Elementary School in Oak Park. And Anessa James, you're gonna present this one for us tonight.
Thank you. In anticipation of the facility turning into a preschool center, Jefferson County School District is making improvements to Campbell Elementary School at 6,500 Oak Street in Arvada. Specifically, the school district plans to modify the existing Campbell School playground to accommodate younger children. Some of the planned improvements fall outside of the Jeffco School District property line and impact city of Arvada-owned property. The city of Arvada and the Jefferson County School District have prepared an intergovernmental agreement that specifies the roles and responsibilities dictating both agencies during the construction and use of the new playgrounds on city-owned parkland adjacent to Campbell Elementary School. The parties agree that the school district will plan, develop, and construct the new playgrounds and renovate existing playgrounds that will be located on both school district property and on park property owned by the city. The school district agrees to fund the entire playground project. Additionally, as dictated by the intergovernmental agreement, the parties agree that the use of the improvements by the school district for the purpose of a school playground will also be used to support recreational requirements of the neighborhood, school, and the general public. Approval of this ordinance aligns with and contributes to the following vibrant community and neighborhoods principle articulated in the City Council strategic plan. It fosters strategic partnerships to advance quality of life and achieve an inclusive, equitable, diverse, resilient, and sustainable community. The city team suggests that we approve CB 23-012.
Open it up for public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council Questions or Action. Ms. Simpson?
I'll make the motion.
You may proceed. You barely beat Ms. Smith to the...
Ms. Smith, you haven't had, please. No, please. Okay. All right. I move that CB 23-012, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement by and between the city of Arvada and the Jefferson County School District related to Campbell Elementary School in Oak Park, be approved on final reading numbered 4845 and ordered published by title only. And my only comment is, this is great. Thanks, guys.
All votes cast. That passes six to zero, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Our final public hearing tonight is Council Bill 23013, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Candellas Point Infrastructure and Kitty Academy, from city of Arvada PUD Planned Unit Development to city of Arvada CG Commercial General, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado 9265 Yucca Lane, be approved. And Rob Sputana, you're going to make the presentation on this one.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, the applicant is requesting a rezoning of approximately four acres of property at the southeast corner of Candellas and 92nd, from PUD to CG. A 1.4-acre portion of the site is currently being planned for a childcare facility, which is being reviewed concurrently for approval subject to the rezoning request. The remaining portions of the property are planned for future flex office space. The Planning Commission voted six to one to recommend approval of the rezoning during their May 16th meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is in attendance for a presentation and questions, and we also have Planner Carol Laban as, for any questions you may have for staff.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. The applicant present, if you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony given in these proceedings will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. You may come down and give us your presentation. State your name and address.
I'm Brian Adlun, address is 2425 Shortridge Place, Erie, Colorado 80516. The location of this particular lot is just north of the Candellas Point Retail Center, which is at Highway 72 and Candellas Parkway. Background on this particular piece of ground, it's Block 1, of Lot 1, which is in Candellas Commercial filing number two. It's approximately 4.72 acres. Current zoning is PUD Planned Unit Development, and the proposed change would take the zoning to CG. The proposed land use is for a daycare facility and conceptually, flex office buildings that would cover three lots. Kitty Academy will sit on the southwest corner of Lot 1, which is a 1.5-acre site, approximately 11,000 square feet with a playground, parking, landscaping. The rest of the lot is conceptualized for a two-flex office, spaces of approximately 9,000 square feet and 12,000 square feet, with an overall building area of approximately 32,000 square feet. This is also aligns with the city of Arvada Comprehensive Plan. And this is just, you can see Kitty Academy, which is on the western southwest corner of the lot. The other two lots just conceptualized at this point. There's the plat, and then we added some renderings of what Kitty Academy would look like. We are rezoning this now, instead of when we did build Candellas Point Retail Center. Just at staff recommendation, we weren't exactly sure what that lot would, would be. That's my presentation.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for City Council Questions or Actions. Mr. Mormon, you're first.
I'd like to reserve the motion.
I don't see anybody else turning on their lights, so you may make... Whoop, whoop, Ms. Smith. Get, get, gotta push faster.
Sorry, I have to reach farther now. Cut me some slack.
We need to make some reasonable accommodations.
Yeah, cut it out. Sorry about that. So, I was just wondering, when, could you go to the rendering of the Kitty Academy, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Is there a reason that it's so blank, if I don't have a really, a better word of saying that, it just, when I think of like a day academy for children, it, this doesn't really scream.
Yeah. Actually, the Kitty Academy architect and Kitty Academy representatives are here. They'd probably be better to answer that than me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's just that when I, when I'm thinking of, we're building something that's welcoming, that's doesn't seem very welcoming.
This does follow the design guidelines within the Candellas commercial area. So, and then I know that cities, we've been working with city staff on their application, getting this through with them. We've had minor changes and have accommodated all of their comments regarding the exterior elevations.
Okay, thanks. And the other one was, I saw that there was a six-to-one vote for planning. Do we know the reasoning with the one no vote was for?
I can address that. The Planning Commissioner who voted no was concerned that this was more of a single, was becoming more of a single-use area versus a mixed-use area. So, he was concerned about that element.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mormon?
I move that CB 23-013, an ordinance rezoning certain land within the city of Arvada, Candellas Point Infrastructure and Kitty Academy, from city of Arvada PUD Planned Unit Development to city of Arvada CG Commercial General, and amending the official zoning maps of the city of Arvada, Colorado 9265 Yucca Lane, be approved on final reading numbered 4846 and ordered published by title only.
Motion's for approval. That passes six to zero, Mr. Pfeiffer being an excused absence. Thank you. Good luck. That concludes our public hearings. Is there any member of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Going, going, gone. Next, any City Council reports. Ms. Simpson?
Yes, thank you so much. I would like to take this opportunity to let the public know about a really great opportunity this week. It's going to be on, or, next week. It's Wednesday, June 14th, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. at the Stanley Lake Library. It's going to be a listening session created about what the community can do to celebrate in 2026 the 250th anniversary of the country, which also is the 150th anniversary of the state of Colorado. Senator Rachel Zinzinger was the prime sponsor of the bill in the 2022 session that created this commission, and the purpose of the commission is to promote events that celebrate the 250th slash 150th around communities and including here in Arvada. So, this listening session will be to garner ideas from local residents about ways that we might mark these significant milestones in our nation and in our state's history. And in a fun additional side fact, it is also the 50th anniversary of the Arvada Center that year. So, I'm certain we'll be having some great ideas there, and hopefully, that gives some creative juices flowing amongst the community. Again, the details on that are Wednesday, June 14th, from 2:30 to 3:30 p.m. at the Stanley Lake Library. I hope to see you there.
Very good. Ms. Gillis, do you have anything for us this evening?
I sure do. First, I do want to remind everybody to take a look at the city's new website, arvadaco.gov. It, it takes some relearning, and it's fantastic. But tonight, that was a little bit of what I was navigating, just some of the change. So, it's pretty awesome, really awesome, and a lot of hard work by the team. Also, I want to say next week is two workshops, well, really, three, update on the bond projects, and then both the capital and operating tenure models. So, that's coming up next week. And then, I wanted to remind council that Wednesday is the employee barbecue at 11 o'clock, and you are all welcome, and that is always a good event. And then, on Saturday, is the bulky item drop-off that is for our community members. So, remind them because it's a great opportunity, and we've got it down now, so it goes really well.
Very good. Anything from legal counsel?
Nothing from the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Nora. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.